Well, I would, I'm always very interested in this thing. So they're doing the work for places and stuff now and it's just awesome.
They do a lot better than we do.
Yeah, that's right.
Also wanna, um, our football boys are district champs and our girls and boys both qualified for state cross-country. And then our volleyball team is, um, one game away from state. They'll, they'll play, um, West Liberty on Tuesday to determine who goes to state.
Is that at West Liberty?
I believe it is. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have they played West Liberty yet?
I think early in the season. It'll be a good even match. Yeah.
Sounds good. With that, we move on to focus on learning and per the adjusted agenda ISG is up first.
Yeah, Sue, are you on?
Yeah, Nathan and Sue here. Can you hear us?
Sue or?
Can you hear us?
Do you have audio on your ears? On some of these?
Are you able to hear us?
Sue? You did.
Are you able to hear us?
Yeah, I don't. Was Adam saying, yeah, but I did say.
Hello?
Nathan around here.
Nathan, anyone?
You got me?
ISG?
Yep, do you hear us? Hmm.
I was talking and no one was responding. I was like, can you hear me?
People are all there in trust. You're really Davis on Zoom.
Hmm.
Hmm, looks like.
Oh, I hear something.
Can you hear us now?
Yeah.
Maybe it's there.
Something, some speaker, maybe they're.
My, my, my. Turn off your speaker.
Okay.
How about now? You getting us now? Anything? Hmm.
Can you hear us now?
I can, we can hear you.
You can hear us. It's working now.
Are you hearing us at all?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you got us, Sue?
Yep.
The joys of technology.
Oh, yes. Kind of fun. We, you would think we'd have this all figured out after COVID, but no such luck. Sue, are you, it looks like Sue is trying to connect to audio still. I'm wondering if she's having a challenge here. Um, but all, I can start while Sue's getting connected there. Um, I'm Nathan Compton, uh, architect with ISG. We, uh, worked through task force meeting the other night. Um, Sue's can talk a little bit about that. We had a, a really nice turnout, a really great engagement. We were, um, able to, uh, walk them through some of the projects that, uh, we are seeing as a potential projects for the district for the bond referendum. Um, and talk about what those forthcoming task force will look like. Just for your awareness, we see the task forces being really a, a beautiful piece that can engage the community. Uh, as you go through a bond referendum, they're the ones that are, that are able to speak to people and, and, and share, uh, some of those details. And we want to be able to equip, equip them with as many of the details as we can as they go into that. Um, personally, right now, from the architectural side, we're working through, um, doing some additional cost estimating. We've gone through and done a facility assessment on your admin building, your, uh, Lakeview Elementary, the bus barn. Um, and are putting together kind of a, a packet of information on, on what we see as, as potential needs for each of those buildings that we're going to share with you. Uh, and that includes some cost estimates. So we kind of understand, uh, how much it'll cost to, to, uh, bring those up, up to speed. And then also kind of updating the cost on the intermediate, um, building and the turf and also the, what the athletic building facility could cost. So that's what I'm kind of working on right now. Sue, are you, uh, able to speak now?
Let's see, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hey, that's exciting. Um, okay. And then I'm gonna see if the host can let me share my screen. It says host disabled that. So let me know if I have that ability. Um, really, we just wanted to also share with you that part of the work of the task force was providing some input and, um, thoughts on the projects that Nathan talked about. And then what'll happen next is that your, um, community will ask all citizens to, um, have an opportunity to learn as well as weigh in on, um, what the projects would be included in the bond. So you'd see a community-wide survey that our intention is to deploy from about November fourteenth until December fourth. So what is a survey? You know, how would people get it? We'll land a postcard in every residential mailbox within the district as well as send out emails posted on your district website. So there'll be a web link where folks can take the survey or they'll be able to download a paper copy and complete that. Um, we'll analyze that data to really make sure that we've got general citizen support across our subgroups of your community, um, for the various projects that we're considering, um, to include in the bond. As well as make sure people are comfortable with, uh, the dollar amount, um, that would be seen at the polls. And then we're going to pull that task force back together again on December eighth. And we will, um, after that, we're going to, here, I can show you my screen now it looks like, um. Let me if you see my screen. Um, then we should, uh, be able to, um, make sure citizens are in support, the task force is supportive. Um, then that group will really be, um, tasked with circulating a petition. So we anticipate that between December ninth and in early January, that they will be collecting signatures from citizens within the district and that you as a board would then see and receive that petition, um, early to mid-January. Then really moving through this process that you would need to call the election by February eighth. And then we would anticipate, um, having something on the ballot for that March seventh election. So I can share this, um, with you, Davis, so you can share that with your group. But really, this is the process. We'll be doing some in-house work like Nathan said. And then really starting to gather and educate all citizens in your community between that November fourteenth and December fourth.
What questions you guys have for all of us?
What's, uh, I mean, this is Cassie. What is the, do you have a number for the 25% of the number of voters from the last election?
Um, not off the top of my head. I know, um, we worked with, um, the clerk and I think we've, I've got that somewhere in the files, what that is, but I can, um, pull that up and get that to Davis and he can send that back to you. But probably a couple hundred votes I would, or a couple hundred signatures I would anticipate.
You got it. Chris, Chris looked it up. Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we do have that number. I would have to find where it was.
I gotta look through my notes. Yeah. Good question.
What's 25% of that?
What was the number?
Come on, Mel. Fifty.
You said a two, three, oh, two, four, twenty.
Okay. Any other questions? I tell you, um, Jamie, Jamie was at that meeting. She was able to attend. Um, we could only have up to two because of it. Now come December eighth, is that right, Sue, our next one?
Yep.
Yeah, on December eighth, we'll want the board there. So that's why we're going to talk about maybe scheduling a work session that you can be there with the stakeholder group to, as we look through that data. Um, I'm gonna give a little shout out to Chris, um, who wrote, writes for the Soul Economist. He did a great job summarizing the meeting. Uh, detail on that. So if you have a chance to, to grab a copy or you can use this, um, he did a really nice job of just, um, highlighting everything from the night. So anything else?
No, I mean, obviously a lot of work needs to go on and, and financing and all that stuff and the process, the cost of product and all that stuff already that what this would be, but it's an exciting time. I know our community will have their voices heard for sure.
So the addition, walk me through the additional cost estimate. You said the admin, Lakeview and the bus barn?
So. Yep. So we're, we're kind of updating also the intermediate. You guys had that addition, uh, already designed and there was an initial cost estimate, I believe of five or six million. Just want to go through that and make sure we're still, where we're still sitting with, um, increased costs over the years with inflation. So I'll be checking that. Um, also, uh, looking at the turf, potentially doing turf on the football field. I just want to update where that cost might be, just so we have a little bit more accurate numbers. Um, and I shared that we had, we had gone through the bus barn and the intermediate and the, the admin. So we'll have some, some update costs for those buildings as well.
Yeah. So as a reminder, they, they brought, uh, engineer team down. They walked through Lakeview. So you're still working on that, right, Nathan? What you saw there?
Yep.
And then, uh, the new transportation site north of town. And then they also came through this tower just to see if we left this tower standing, what would the cost be to bring it up to ADA compliance? And, um, you know, if the rest of it came down, what would that mean for heating and cooling and, and things like that? So just the cost of leaving the tower compared to raising it and finding another location for central office.
Will that, will those estimates be given to the public?
Yes. Yep. So all of that will appear, um, in the survey as we kind of start to build again, what is the scope and what is the cost? Right? So people can have an understanding of this is what the scope would include and this is the cost because in essence, that's how you make a decision of, is this something that we feel, you know, as a citizen, I feel the high priority at that cost at this time?
Yeah. So great question. And Sue kind of showed me some samples of some other surveys that they use in other districts. Each project that we do, it will, tha- that portion of the survey would be devoted to it. Here's, for instance, here's, um, here's the project at Lakeview, kind of a description. Here's the estimated price tag. Can you support it? Is this something that, you know, you find high priority, less priority, something like that? And then we'll go down to the next one. That way it's not just all lumped into one. We can really get a feel of what, what projects within our big scope is a community really going to get behind?
Is it a, is it a rank order? That you would do in addition to vote your durability to fund something like this?
My intention would be to design this survey so that you, each of the projects within the overall, uh, what proposal, we'd ask for people to do a high, medium and low priority as far as if it's a high priority to you now, medium or low. And given that, we will be able to rank order them overall when we look at, um, your community. Further, um, what I'm going to do with the data is, um, pull it apart and look at, you know, different subsets of your community and how it correlates with voter turnout. Meaning that, um, general citizens or folks that, um, aren't parents of school-aged children or school district employees will be able to weight that differently as we analyze the data. And I'll walk you through why we would do that. So we'll be able to look at the data as a whole and then we'll be able to do some analysis of it to, um, better correlate it with making sure it's representative of your community and representative of people voting as you analyze the data.
And, and Sue, when we put this up, will we be able to work with budgetary and say what the impact's going to be for households and all that stuff? Will that be part of this process or no?
Yep, absolutely. And so that's why Tim was at the meeting and we will continue to have conversation with him. So there will be a tax chart where people can then say, based on the property or properties that I own and the value of those, this is what that looks like. Now, no, that all of what we're doing, um, that this is going to be a zero net increase, right? So we know that based on your property valuation increase and the debt that you've paid off, um, the intention is that you'll be able to bond without seeing an increase in taxes.
That'll be important. So again.
Circling back to the question real quick that was asked, um, your last election, I found the sheet. So thanks for asking. Last time you had seventeen thirty-eight that voted in your last school district election. Twenty-five percent of that, we're going to need about four hundred and thirty-four, four hundred and forty signatures on that petition in order to move a ballot question forward.
And also remember for that number, cause I pulled the same number up. That's just the Johnson County turnout. There are a handful of houses in Mount Vernon. I don't know how they vote. So.
Yeah, it looks like two there. So yeah, we'll double check all of that, but yeah.
As long as you. Five hundred signatures.
Yeah. So if we do five hundred signatures, it will be more than enough, but, uh.
Sue, this is, uh, Adam. I wasn't at the meeting, but, uh, you know, when we run these surveys, is there a way that we kind of have a district priority? Cause if somebody's saying, well, Lakeview's not a priority, how would they really know, you know, for the vision of the next 10 years plus? You know, what that, I mean, do we kind of rank what we think needs done accordingly? And then what's your priority? Because again, some of these people don't know the constraints on these buildings or the age or just the flow or how it's going to look in the next five to 10 years. Do we put something out there that says, hey, this is what we're seeing with the new development and housing and the building that's coming? Here's priority one for us, two, three, four. Do we put that out there or is this? That maybe comes later?
A little bit of each. And so that's what I've been working with Davis and Pat and the team and our internal team on building that story. And so some of that will deploy within the survey. So, um, you know, we were working today back and forth with your district leadership on, um, capacity of our buildings. And as we see enrollment growth, that need for additional classrooms, um, then we'll provide that in some written format and some materials so that you can start to and continue to educate your community on those needs, right? We know that with enrollment growth, we're going to need those general education classrooms and some of those other support rooms. So the, the, the purpose of the survey is in essence to tell a story where people understand this is a high priority need, or we've identified this as a high priority need based on what we're seeing in enrollment growth. And so we'll give you, um, and work with you on creating those, um, those information, um, you know, snippets, if you will, that you'll be able to push out in various ways to the community. But we also want people at this early stage, um, to read that and then let us know where they're at. So even if we know it's a high priority and people read through the survey and say it's not, then we know we've got more work to do in educating and making sure citizens get what's happening and why this is a need for the district. So we certainly want to give them some information and then we want to know, I always say it's how long of a putt is it, right? As far as how much more engagement and how do we connect with people to make sure they understand?
Thanks, Nathan. Thanks, Sue.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, you too.
So this is within this window of November fourteenth to December fourth, we know is we know when it's going to be players and once we know more about when it's going to be useful though.
Yeah.
To know that. So we have advanced on it. People are starting to get surveyed.
Is that what I'm listening to? Like the community stuff that you get through text message and email?
We'll keep blacking it out. A postcard will arrive, but we'll, we'll blast out before, hey, check your mailboxes that. And then, and then after that, we'll keep saying, make sure you complete it. Make sure you complete it. Let your voice be heard. But that's only going to go to our, that portion, when we blast out on our meat, on our stuff, that will only go to our enrolled students.
That's still a lot of people though.
Still a lot of people.
But it's not all the voters though. No, 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 no. I guess you're getting something. Once that I think gets out, then they throw it over the, hey, yeah, here's five.
Will we get talking points before then?
I will get the content of this.
You'll get it before.
That's what I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll see everything. Cause again, there's, there's the Adams question. The challenge is, you know, lay out our, lay out our story upfront about where we're at, where we're going. So similar to Davis' present and the team presented them last time. Uh, at the, at the last meeting, whatever, October seventeenth.
Yeah.
So October, the, the stakeholder meeting.
Right.
So, you know, I think the, the goal is to, to kind of refine that based on the feedback and I actually get fed back out to the board. Um, cause we'll get questions in advance of that. Now that, now this is in the paper, uh, there'll be increased questions. I think we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Uh, about kind of where the highest priority, uh, targets are. And there's, there's still work to figure out what offensive within a budget and how broad the scope can be. So, um, there's still some work, I think, before the November fourteenth, but.
My assumption isn't that these are our highest priorities, but that we should put in a survey that any persuasion to to how they might respond to your survey. We want their law feelings.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
We've already listed out our high priorities. Those are the things going into the survey with the admin, like you respond, et cetera.
I guess that's a question, you know, how far down that list? There's other things on the list that are, that, that maybe are not fundable. And I think that's, that is a question about how
How far down the list do we go?
Or outside that list? Yeah. Well, beyond that, even just other projects that are, that were, that were identified when we interviewed uh, folks surrounding the school. There were lots of projects. And so the question is just how far down that list you go knowing that you've only got X amount of money. And so, you know, it, it does become the question of, you know, you want, being the, putting the survey out, you want to get information about what the community is supportive of. And if if one of the projects that we think is a high priority has no support in the community, then how do you, how do you regroup and, and look at where the steps forward are? If you, if you, if you don't have that information about what, what it is they would have supported or what projects that they remember are important, then we put out there. So, so I think it's a good, it's a good point. I think, uh, maybe Cassie, if you don't mind chatting with Davis and the ISG crew, cause I think it's a, it's a fine line about where you draw that line and you've got some survey experience. And so I think it's maybe useful to, to, as they refine that, that set that line, you're looking to be useful there. So if you're willing to do that.
You got the feedback, right? Yeah. You got, and that was just very brief.
And, and I think, like, you have two of you. You know, we have to cut the line.
Yeah.
You know, and just where are those, where are those lines?
And, and determine where that cutoff is too. Because, I mean, if there's only an appetite right now to borrow this much to do this, then we can come back as Tim Oswald presented. We can, we can, we can do this much and then come back in five years and bond again to do these. Or we can just set, hey, we want to do these over the next five years and bond for that much uh, money to fund them. So we kind of have some options or choices that we're going to have to narrow down before.
It's good. The hard part is, it's kind of like before. I mean, being able to complete SIS and some other stuff, we've been way cheaper. Yeah.
Oh, definitely.
That's the problem. You just keep waiting and figure that ball down the road. But it's like, well, it's going now maybe actually cheaper.
And there, um, and I love the point about you got to go to the story. They're not going to have the context to the market trends and shit.
Enrollment increases and.
Uh, capacity returns, what's coming into the district, that story, but also the challenges that are currently facing these one of the most.
Yeah. And, and like Tim said, at that meeting that night, the PowerPoint, I mean, it just was slight, but there was a story that we narrated along with those slides. They'll, they'll take that, that same story and, and, and with some feedback that we got, well, you know, and it'll be narrated in the survey so that they're just not reading, oh, you're going to add on to a school? Yes or no?
Right.
Yeah, there's going to be, yeah. The, eh, the fact that, you know, we've got six developments that a lot of dirt's being moved in. Um, foundations are going to, you know, roads are in the development behind your house.
Yeah.
Foundations are going into trail ridge this spring is what I hear, you know, start. So they're going to start moving and, and from the time you bond to butts in seat is about three years. Now we're going to be ahead of the game a little bit with SIS because we've already done the hard work of the design. Um, so, but with that said, it's yep, yep. So and they're work, and they're graphing all that stuff. And we're going to be conservative as far as our trend on enrollment. We're going to say, you know, what if we grow right now? We're, you know, we're averaging 20 students a year. What if we go to 35 students a year? You know, over five, over ten, five to 10 years, what's that due to our enrollment?
Yeah, well.
Our kindergarten class is, I think, one thirty-seven. So that's now
It's a big one.
We're swinging back and is that going to be the new trend?
Yeah. Any other questions on this topic? Okay. Don't worry, we read, anything, anything, any thoughts? You're like, I'm out of here. I graduate this spring, you know? That's for you to figure out next year.
She told Ben, the less you say, the quicker the meeting goes.
I should, I should tell you that probably will be done by September. So.
Let's roll. Come on.
Focus on learning, October seventeenth, district professional development overview. Josh, I'm assuming that's you.
And, and I'm going to say, we put the seventeenth out, but I asked Josh, October was a very productive month in professional development. So.
It's good. The hard part is, it's kind of like before. I mean, being able to complete SIS and some other stuff, we've been way cheaper.
Yeah. Oh, definitely.
That's the problem. If you just keep waiting and figure that ball down the road.
And there, um, and I love the point about you got to build a story. They're not going to have the context to the market trends.
Enrollment increases and.
Uh, capacity returns, what's coming into the district, that story, but also the challenges that are currently faced with these one of the most.
Yeah. And, and like Tim said, at that meeting that night, the PowerPoint, I mean, it just was slight, but there was a story that we narrated along with those slides. They'll, they'll take that, that same story. And, and, and with some feedback that we got, well, you know, and it'll be narrated in the survey so that they're just not reading, oh, you're going to add on to a school, yes or no?
Right.
Yeah, there's going to be, yeah. The, eh, the fact that, you know, we've got six developments that a lot of dirt's being moved in. Um, foundations are going to, you know, roads are in the development behind your house.
Yeah.
Foundations are going into trail ridge this spring is what I hear, you know, start. So they're going to start moving and and from the time you bond to butts in seat is about three years. Now we're going to be ahead of the game a little bit with SIS because we've already done the hard work of the design. Um, so, but with that said, it's Yep, yep. So.
Well.
And they're work, and they're graphing all that stuff. And we're going to be conservative as far as our trend on enrollment. We're going to say, you know, what if we grow right now, where, you know, we're averaging 20 students a year? What if we go to 35 students a year? You know, over five, over ten, five to 10 years, what's that due to our enrollment?
Yeah, well.
Our kindergarten class is, I think, 137. So that's now
It's a big one.
We're swinging back and is that going to be the new trend?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on this topic? Don't worry, we read, anything, any thoughts? You're like, I'm out of here. I graduate this spring, you know? That's for you to figure out next year.
She told Ben, the less you say, the quicker the meeting goes.
I should, I should tell you that probably won't be done by September.
Let's roll, come on.
Focus on learning, October seventeenth, district professional development overview. Josh, I'm assuming that's you.
And, and I'm going to say, we put the seventeenth out, but I asked Josh, October was a very productive month in professional development. So I asked Josh to kind of overview that with the board.
That'll try and be quick. Um, really honestly, the last few, we've been really, really busy. We've had a lot of uh, the K five level writing, professional development happening. Um, I'd say job embedded for the most part, um, is it the 29th of September, we had Fran McVay, kind of a a local expert in, in writing and writing units of study. Um, she's been working with our staff ongoing since the beginning of the school year. Um, and really the focus has been on conferring, um, those student conferences was uh, regarding their writing and, and coming up with a compliment. Um, and, and really focusing on u- utilizing the, um, on-demand writing assessments that they're using. Uh, we've had a lot of really good feedback from our staff in, in regards to that ongoing professional development. Um, as we, as I've said over and over and several times in different board meetings, you know, our focus is on job and better professional development with a narrow focus, with the expectation that we're going to see 10% change in a year's time. Uh, those, those three components are, are critical to our professional development plan. And we're staying, we're trying to stay as true to that, especially that ongoing. It's not just an event that happens one time during the year and then we move on. Um, we're really focused, narrow focus on writing. Um, we've had some outstanding professional development in math and K eight. Um, as you can see, I've got some pictures and took a bunch of pictures. Uh, these pictures are of, uh, in a fifth grade classroom, one of our teachers. Uh, this individual here, her name is Janan Ham. She's a consultant from New Perspectives Online, which is our new, our math curriculum. Um, we had her come in and do lesson study with kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth and fifth grade and spend about two hours with each grade level over, over the course of two days. And she worked with kids. And as you can see, um, during this co-teaching, they actually um, engage in professional conversation around what the kids are saying and doing. Uh, what's happening with the, the curriculum or the resource? What are some, um, big ideas and takeaways uh, that we're seeing and observing, uh, during that time? So the setup of that was there is a little professional development, uh, session prior to the co-teaching. And the co-teaching lasts about an hour, uh, with an actual lessing, letting one of the units that we're teaching currently. And then a debrief afterwards to kind of talk through what were some of the moves that she did or some of the questions or the challenges that they see coming up. Um, and especially, um, quite honestly, this day I think was really powerful because it was spent really assessing where the students were in their learning at that moment in time with, with the math and the concepts. And then being able to take that information back into brief about that and determine, okay, what, what is it that we need to work on? And because we did a K five, we were able to, uh, I identify a couple of different areas that we noticed that we really got to work on. We have some gaps. Uh, in regards to, uh, math learning and math instruction while we do, uh, on what we're doing. So just some pictures here again, uh, she's actually up in front of the class, teaching again, some collaboration with teachers. Uh, this is a, a first grade classroom here, when Mrs. Dibble's classroom, they were talking about, um, how do you measure 30 seconds? What does that really mean when we talk about 30 seconds? And then this one here was in a third grade classroom. Um, and it was really powerful to see all the teachers were in that classroom together, co-teaching, working with students, collaborating, um, and learning from each other, uh, in regards to the works being done. Then just last week, we had Pam Harrison, national expert in mathematics. Again, aligns directly with what we're doing at the elementary for sixth through eighth grade. She modeled, modeled lesson for, um, algebra. There's eighth grade students for an algebra class as well as a sixth grade classroom. Um, and then we had opportunities, again, the setup was professional development before the lesson, the lesson, and then the debrief afterwards. And just talking about the moves that she made, um, and giving teachers an opportunity to really dig in, um, and under, and understand, you know, this is the direction we're going. Um, these are some of the things that we need to be thinking about. Um, really, really powerful. At the end of this day, so this is just with six, three, eight grade teachers. But then at the end of the day, SIS teachers, fourth and fifth grade actually came over for an hour just to spend with Pam. Super powerful. Um, Mel, you said they just couldn't stop talking about the whole next day. So.
Josh told me about something he talked to Pam about, or not Josh, you're John. Jared told me that, that he used in class today and it just made the world of difference.
So we, and then obviously this past Monday was professional development. Again, narrow focus on current academic planning at the high school level, guaranteed viable curriculum work. Um, six, eight, writing, uh, and then a big component, uh, the pillar of just, uh, social emotional behavioral health. There's a big component across the system on that day. So, um, you know, and principals can um, saying, making them on about this, but just the momentum we have right now this year is we're so much farther ahead than we have been the last three years. I mean, it's the, the positive attitudes, the, um, the willingness to jump in and, um, and I think it contributes to our principal leadership. The willingness of our teachers to really think differently about how we can be your students and student learning, student centered learning environment. I'm just, I've said it multiple times, I'm just so excited about everything that's happening right now. And we just have a lot of momentum.
But a lot. Yeah, we have this with the talk here this morning and they're like, I know you said go ahead and do one part, but we were doing this important meeting, we did this with writing this weekend, like it was Monday. Today's Thursday and they've already like implemented all of the things from Thursday. And it's just been, it's been awesome. They have done some hard work this.
Yeah. And even like the conferings that we've started the year off with, like, we've had always teachers that are even one step ahead of us in what they're doing. And that's like a fire was um, on our end, just taking it to the next level, the first level. But then they're already getting it out. Well, I've got this, then this is just natural. So they're a little ahead of humans for the training that we're providing. And it's, it's really giving that But I think too, the other thing that's coming from it, that's kind of pushed us and admin team a little bit is like they're starting to see that, um, now we know this about our kids and like, how does this match with grading and how do we report this to parents? And so they're like pushing the wall forward. And so we don't have to like, how do we get them to see that they're already pushing forward to like, hey, but this isn't matching. So how do we make this change? How do we move this forward? And so it's been good, good conversations that come out of the morning.
Where we, we'd send you, we'd send you to college and and that's great. You know what I mean? But you affect a few teachers and they may have to come back and teach more teachers and some is lost in that transition. I think we can do things like this and you can actually touch kids and then afterwards read, you know, I think that, um, we just, well, one is precise teachers, right? But two, we can impact so many more people in one day than a few people going to teach us college. No, I'm not saying that was an experience. It's not what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is bringing these people in, you know, and having, and using them for a whole day in a way that you can touch multiple grades and, and, um, definitely seems like might be our wave of our future of, of how we, it's, it's a little more costly, but man, the payoff is great.
You've already seen the transferability. I mean, and not just from a small group, but from the whole group, the transferability. And it allows us to, it's the job embedded. It allows us to get away from the, um, event and make it just part of our work, ongoing. Yeah. I mean, Fran's been here four times already since August and, and we've got her.
And they're, and they're just, you're, you're quick hitting professional development onsite. And boom, okay, now, now go implement. Now let's, we'll come back and we'll talk more. And it, and we really are, are focused on the, the mob, this improvement model, looking at when it comes to change theory, demonstration, supported practice, looking and analyzing our implementation and then looking at our data and then coming back around and looking back more closely. Um, it's, it's a more organic, uh, it's, it's, I think it's super messy at times. But as we start to see the pieces come together, it just, it's fun. It gets to, and it's, it's enjoyable.
So you have more stuff already mapped out for the rest of the year? Or is it changed based on what kind of experience and what's going on right now?
It, it's just like a coaches, um, for the year. And then as you see, it's like, hmm, we've, well, it's just like a teacher with their classroom. It's just, we've got it mapped out. But we make tweaks along the way. Um, you know, we've adjusted, we mapped out, we sat with Fran this last spring. Got back with her this summer, made some changes, had it mapped out, but already we're kind of tweaking it. Not, not the fact that she's coming on these days, or maybe tweaking the content. Hey, they picked this up so fast. Yeah, we can move forward. Or in the last one, these grade levels are ready to go to the next step. These aren't, let's differentiate it. So that's the adjustments that we're making. But as far as the, the, the focus, the content, um, the pace is maybe different, adjusted.
I'm trying to be responsive to the teachers too and what they need and gathering feedback from them, um, as well as, hey, Josh, like I just had a conversation, right? Uh, our team might be ready for this piece. We're really curious. We know that there's a team at the high school working on um, this pathways to proficiency, um, curricular hierarchy. We're curious about what that looks like, um, because we feel like we're solid in this area. So it's it's all the different pieces. It's having some sort of a plan, but also being flexible in response to, hey, teachers are already ready, it aligns with what we're doing. So now you just tell me when you're, when you're ready to go. And it's, it's just naturally starting, it's just.
And teachers, I think they're even seeing like, they have entered, well, through my goal of course, they've said, thank you for having a narrow focus. And that's something we've talked about at an admin team, like staying focused on it and really getting really good at it. But through that process, it's helping them drive forward, it helps like, like.
Dan's point of having a local, I think that's incredibly helpful and it's all us. We're not shared with a thousand other people. Um, that's powerful. But also what I've noticed this fall is our instructional program, so much in their role. And our Grantwood day staff has just really been a part of our teams. Uh, the social emotional training we went to, uh, they go in, great resources. Uh, our, your Monday, number bridge. Coached our coaches to coach our teachers and it was just really awesome to see. Um, Josh mentioned it's more positive, right? So I mean, I think from an adult point, right? If this is the work that we feel is important, then from the board's perspective, right? Then we need to, you know, if that becomes a priority for us, and I'm not speaking for everyone, but if that becomes a priority for us, we need to to back that financially, you know, even whatever that looks like. So obviously, within the reason.
Right. Well, and you know, Dan, we've, we've got our instructional support levy, we use some of, but we've also been working with, um, um, the teachers through the teacher quality committee. Um, and we've reallocated some of those dollars to go towards things like this and not necessarily towards two individuals. If that makes sense. So we've reallocated, we, you know, it has to be agreed upon. And so they, they've seen uh, how we're using those dollars. And so we've together agreed to reallocate some of that, which has helped bring in some of these experts. So we're using multiple sources. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's some, there's some opportunity.
You mentioned earlier about 10% change in a year's time. You, in fact, that for me a little bit, what that means, 10%.
So. I'd say 10% in change and, and practice. So now some of the research that we've read over the course of the last few years indicates that you really should expect 10% change over the course of a year. And by change, I mean like a real change, like you see a difference.
Deep rooted automaticity, just entrenched. Yeah.
The way I've tried to explain it to, you know, as, as simple as possible. So let's say there's 10 components of this initiative. We can get one of those components down in one year while we're, we're doing pretty good. And then and then hopefully the next year we add the other component and the other component. But I think as we're seeing this year, it's actually, it's, the speed is increasing because of the, the motivation and um, teachers seeing the impact that it's having. Gasky in the eighties, um, through his professional development model, I say this on stuff all the time, but he has this model of implement the practice. Um, see the results, change, or change, uh, change beliefs. So right now what we're doing is we're really focused on change or implementing the practice by supportive practice. We're seeing results from that, whether that's student achievement or qualitative information. And then teacher olden, changing their beliefs around that. We're starting to see some of that happen.
Yeah. It to the point, to the point when we say tempered, to the point where we want it just to become embedded. Automaticity, you know, it's like, why do they do that stupid crossover drill every single day for three and a half months during the basketball season? So that when they're in the game, they're not even thinking about crossing over. It just naturally occurs as they're driving to the basket. We want that, our classroom teachers, when they sit down to confer with a student, it's just, they're not thinking about what do I say or how do I approach it, how to respond? It's just part of their fabric and it becomes that way. And so that's why we're kind of slowing down, going deeper, spending more time with it. Spending more time with demonstration and practice. Feedback on that practice and, and just keep coming back around and around and around. So that's a big, big difference, being very intentional about that.
I'd be interested to see how the feedbacks on the student outcomes.
Yeah.
No, we've already had the first window, it's closed and then they'll have the winter window for.
You just closed the first window, you have the once the second one up?
And to see significant results, it may be three years. If we're going, you know, embedding it that deep. Yeah, social emotional?
Yep, off to, I've been requesting social emotional behavioral health as an impatient update.
That's you.
That's why I moved you up here.
Why are you going to sit next to the gavel? The Bentorff boys.
So we've been doing a lot of work. Our, our, uh, district team has met a few times now. Yeah, a few times now. Uh, we have another one coming up in November with, again, our, our focus on, um, improving, uh, tier one instruction, establishing str- uh, leadership structures in each building. Uh, as well as at the district level, um, we've been meeting, uh, professional development topics. We sent a team a couple of weeks ago to the Iowa best conference. Um, representatives from each building to gather and it's really good. It's put on by University of Iowa Stanlin, Stanlin's Center for Mental, uh, Mental Health. Um, uh, really well, well done. A lot of great sessions, um, a lot of discussions on what we're bringing back. Actually, Mike Thompson and I had a conversation with um, one of the, um, folks from the Stanlon Center today, just to talk about what are the opp- opportunities for continuing our ACE's training and our trauma-informed training in our district that we um, were abruptly, which didn't, uh, complete all the way through that, that year of the pandemic. Uh, I've also, I also had another conversation with a national, our regional expert in that area too today to see what support she could potentially provide in terms of ongoing coaching. And we've obviously had, um, middle school team went to Grantwood for some training in that area as well. Um, and met with the counseling team and we had a conversation with a local vendor on school-based therapy, uh, what that might look like for us. We're going to reach out to a couple, a few more vendors just to see what costs are. Their availability is, because this particular vendor said we're still short staffed. So there's probably no way we, we, we can go down that route. Um, but, uh, conversations around our police, uh, system and, and the district as well as, um, continuing our conversation, thinking about what is the purpose of the community mental wellness committee that we need to get back online? And how do we use that team to access, uh, local, regional, you know, resources? Uh, local, regional, you know, resources, or, or district, which you do in touch with. In that area, so, um, we're moving, it's not as quickly, there's not as fast and furious as. Maybe we would like, but we have some things going in the right direction, especially with the leadership structures happening in the buildings. Uh, I think there's been some positive momentum in that area too.
On, um, on top of mental health, continue on, the, the grant that Josh secured for us last spring, um. Casey's been talking with a gentleman from the U of I. About, um, providing services and, and learning and supports for coaches. And, um, sponsors and athletes and, um, extracurricular participants. And going from that angle and, um, areas of mental health. And they're discussing, you know, what, what those areas may be, they talked about stressors, facing adversity, mental toughness, performance, time management. Fear of failure or letting people down, pressure, how to communicate, things like that, and so. There are initial conversations as far as, um. Putting some structures in place that, you know, maybe during seasons, we take some Thursday afternoons. With athletes and coaches prior to practices, um, or such, because we want to hit both of them, so that's ongoing and, and, uh. Believe that part of that grant that Josh secured will be able to use some of that funding to compensate for that initiative and kind of start that work. That gentleman in conversation with Casey had noted that, you know. Ten, fifteen years ago, the new trend was a strength coach, you got someone in that weight room for your athletes. He goes, this is the next thing, and you're gonna see over the next ten years, school districts hiring or outsourcing. Um, m- mental wellness type supports for athletes, so.
Colleges that have you on your staff. So, um, you, you know, the thing I liked about reaching out to the more music people, I hope they actually. You know, the teacher in the first short period, anywhere, you know, you know, you're, you're banned back, it's where you're in a play. You're in a football game, you're kind of, you know, you're that goes.
Far more.
More significant amount.
Yeah, yeah.
Than, you know, a week of a teacher, and so I think having those people, and some of those people aren't part of staff, right? They're outside of our, like, staff, and they coach them outside, or they, you know, they bring and teach and, or do whatever. You know, the play and all that stuff, and so I think having those people have some, um, training, because a lot of them don't have it, right? And so having them know and see some of those signs and help, I think that would be beneficial for you.
One last thing before we move on, um, workplace learning. Um, Josh and I met with the representatives from, uh, workplace learning connections there through Kirkwood. Um, we had met with, uh, Zach the week before and talked about his ICAP work in the high school. Which, when workplace learning representatives go out to other school districts. They always point back to Solon's ICAP work, that we are far, far beyond any school. Of the thirty-two schools in Grantwood A A, no one come, measures close to, to what we're doing with that. Um, we wanna, we kind of talked about setting, establishing a, a goal to strive for, that ninety-five percent of our students will graduate. With some type of experience in a job shadow or an internship. And, um, we brought them to the table to just talk about, okay, what barriers are there? Um, how can you help us with those, and how can we work towards obtaining that goal in the next couple of years? Uh, currently, we have sixty to seventy kids each year participate in a job shadow. And anywhere from twenty-five, right around twenty-five kids do a sixty-hour internship. So, you know, whether, whether they do a job shadow their sophomore year or their senior year. We would really like at some point in their high school career to experience either a three-hour job shadow. Or a thirty or sixty hour internship prior to graduation, and so that's what we'll be working towards. Um, in the next couple of years.
You know, the internships we like behind, a lot of the Iowa City, these schools are in the more metro.
Yeah, one thing, yeah, and, and again, sometimes it's, uh, um, accessibility, so. They're gonna, they're gonna help us kind of do a write-up, and then we're gonna blast it out to our parents. Uh, and try to open the door, uh, within our parents, I'm sure there are a lot of parents that would take a job shadow child or a student. Or take on an internship student, and so we want to make our parents more aware of this. Uh, parents that don't have high school kids, but, you know, live in our community, have a business nearby. Or a profession that they would be able to do that, and so we're gonna try to help Kirkwood to expand this area for our kids. In order to make that more accessible. Um, there's a, there's a ICAP day coming up Wednesday, October twenty-sixth. Um, there's a nice schedule that ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders, they all have different activities planned, it's all geared towards their grade level. Eight, uh, ninth graders are going to Career Inspire event. So they'll be going to an event there, uh, there'll be some speakers coming in for tenth graders, uh, S E L workshop. Um, eleventh graders are going on a campus visit tour, and twelfth grade's gonna have some keynote speakers, and Zello.
And Zello is the online platform we're using for, um.
Interesting.
Secondary, uh, in- interest things with, yeah.
So that's a big ICAP day for the high school, so.
There's a.
Uh, Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, I think what we do is, uh, we, they run a, do they, how do they do that? Oh, starts, late start schedule, right? Okay, eight thirty to eleven fifteen is what that'll run.
Sometimes it can be very hard.
Yeah.
Some years, it's kind of, it's also, last year, I thought it was more interesting. First one year, it was kind of hard, because it was like new for us, and so we were just like, doing all this, people were like, we had to start amazing about ourselves, it wasn't that fun, but like. I think it's gotten better, it's gotten ways like maybe a bit better.
Uh, in, in talking with Zach, he'll tell you, it has changed, they have an ICAP team. And he said the only thing they're missing right now on their ICAP team is student voice, which they'll work on. Uh, but they have tweaked and changed and revised and improved each year, because they do a lot of reflection following each of these days. But student voice is gonna be the next group that's gonna be on that ICAP faculty team, yeah.
I think one thing we add is like more personal, is that like personalization, uh, for some, so maybe just so. More, maybe those guys, uh, just like throwing off people in their.
Like one year, Mr. Thompson, he's made a video, and we can just like sit there in class and watch it, and it was kind of. Kind of boring, it was a twenty minute video, and we sat there and. Very slow, pretty nice.
Dan, your secret's out. All right, thank you, and, and then if you don't mind, um, Becky's got a report that, um, not available tonight, we'd like. Table that if we could for, uh, next month and, uh, just give you an update on, we hired a new position. That's going into classrooms, you know, doing some food testing and some. Yeah, so that was it, that, uh, Becky's been really thrilled with how that's working out and, and the candidate that we hired. And then just talk about, um, the, uh, state of the program, including the financials, which is. Yes, very much, yes.
So we'll refer that to next month, um, thanks for the brief report on that, Davis. Board committee updates, um, anything, anything that I was supposed to report on tonight. You're too far ahead, uh, nothing, nothing on budget, nothing on building the grounds, negotiations, board policy, twenty-eight wellness, no, we're good. Uh, no committee updates tonight, uh, consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve instead of agenda as presented. Motion by Luska, second by Koons to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, see if I'm by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to action items, Psyak Committee, as we may recall, last month we were unbalanced. Uh, it did we made some additions to balance it out so that we now comply with state law, I'm always in favor of complying with state laws. And so therefore, um. And you caught it, yeah, we were committed to slip that through. Well, I should have caught it before we got to the night of the meeting, rather than, uh, rather than catching it while it was up for vote, um. So, what we're looking for here is we've added, uh, three male parents to balance it out, and we've got the.
And a counselor, and a male counselor, yeah, two and, yeah.
Two and one, two parents and a counselor, uh, to balance out the, uh, so we have fifty-fifty male, female split, which is required on the side committee by state law. So I can make a motion to approve, so our committee has amended, yeah, motion by Luska to approve as amended. Second by roll calls, any further discussion? So, uh, just to explain the students, there are laws that we have to follow, and sometimes. Sometimes, uh, uh, best laid plans don't always get us into clients, and so this is a catch-up on last one, so. All, all the everybody, I say aye, all right, aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Modify the law will grow for special education deficit request for three hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, Davis, I'll, so basically, to explain to those that are here, it means that we spent more money than what the state gave us. Uh, they're not gonna, they're not gonna give us any more money, but they're gonna pretend that we didn't spend the money, so we get the allow, we get the, uh.
Authority.
Spending authority back, so they're not gonna give us the money, but they're gonna pretend that we didn't spend it, we get the spending authority back, so if we have the money in the future, we can spend it. Got it, got it, we do, so, and Ben, just to, there's gonna be several times during the year where we do this, and it's always the same, which is. If they doesn't give us enough money for the things they tell us to do, and instead of giving us the money, they tell us, well, we can just pretend you didn't spend it. And you can get the authority to spend that money back, uh, and so that's this one here, especially.
Come down, I mean, we've been, we've started.
Six hundred, about six hundred, yeah, six hundred thousand, yeah.
And so again, the goal, you know, we, our goal is to provide a quality education for our students, and so we spend what we need to do that, um, and. That requires sometimes spending more than what the state says it should cost us. I'll make a motion to approve, modify the law will approve for special education deficit request for three hundred and forty-nine thousand, six forty-nine and ninety-six cents. Motion by Luska, second by Koons. Any, any discussion before we go to a roll call? Hearing none, Chris, can you call the roll?
Yes, we're false.
Yes.
Koons.
Yep.
Luska.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Wolf is absent, motion carries for zero.
And just as a reference, some votes are roll call votes, and Chris always reminds us so that we don't mess up and do, uh, just the A's and A's. Uh, so it works out for summer eight, six P M. to review the committee survey results.
What date is it, is that a Thursday or?
That is a Thursday, and it'll be at the C F A to accommodate the fifty stakeholders.
Okay. Let me look at my calendar.
Motion to set the work session for December eighth, six P M. to review the new survey results.
I will second that. And I anticipate they've already pretty much locked it in on their calendar too for that, okay, perfect.
And communicated out to the stakeholder group.
Yeah, I, being the person that I am. I will point out that you've chosen the night of the Iowa State basketball.
Well, we know Iowa State's gonna take it, so why?
Not, we know, we, we know that Dr. Well, we can see him in Susan Ticket at Carver Hawk Arena that night.
Your son can thank me, because he'll get your ticket now. Yeah.
Just wanted to point that out, that, you know, uh, hopefully, hopefully, you get, hopefully you get majority of people attending, um. You know, I don't know how long it'd be scheduled, uh, it's right now, the game doesn't start till seven, so I don't know, we, I don't know, but, but that's why, I, I'm just, I'm just. Just trying to figure out, uh, the people, I don't know, how, how long did the last meeting take, how long do you think it's gonna take to go through this?
Uh, we, well, we went an hour and a half, but we had that PowerPoint, and we had to tell our story, and we gave them like a half hour as far as. Talk time, feedback time, I don't know, it, it'd probably take ninety minutes.
Well, so we're, so aside from the game, if we just started at five-thirty anyway, right? That might not be a bad time, it's consistent with how we meet with the board.
And I guess, there's two things I'm gonna say on this front, which is technically, I can call a work session without, without it being set by the board. Uh, the second issue is that we could just set the board, set it for that night. Uh, and then, uh, set the time, basically, without a time, and we can set time based on that. Those are two thoughts for the board to consider, um, whether, you know, you said, which we, we lock this in, uh, specifically at six P M. Because if we, then if we set it at six P M. on that night, and then we want to change it, we all have to come back, we have a meeting to change it.
You just want to approve it without a file, you said summer, you say. And then we find through it just to make sure that they're.
I mean, they're gonna be, I mean, they're gonna be here or I'm not.
Well, I know, I was the stakeholders too, just to make sure we get.
Last one I'm worried about is, there will be, if we don't have people show up. So, because I, I'm more worried whether I skip the game, it won't be the first time I skip the basketball game, um. But if we get people that don't show up, because they're, I, I want their input, and if they're, if they're sitting at home, watching the basketball game instead of hanging out with us. Um, that defeats the purpose of having the staple, I mean, that's my better answer.
What would you like me to?
I do about, talk about what this maybe, and then just, and just make sure that we figure out what, what works for them.
Make a motion to set the work session for December eighth. No set time to review the survey results.
What's my roll calls, second, second by Koons. Yeah, I think I would just make sure we reach out to the community and make sure that, that group, that, that, you got a time that works, that we can get the majority of them there. I want a commitment that they can be there, because, and, and if you're only gonna have a handful of people that are willing to show up that night, then it makes no sense, and we'll have to come back and revisit this. But, uh, you know, um, that's, I guess that's what I've got to say on that, on that front. Um, all those, any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, see if I'm by saying aye, aye, opposed, uh, motion carries unanimously. Yeah, I should have looked at my calendar earlier, and I did a brace before, sorry, but I. I just knew we was on there, um. Uh, next up is the. First reading of board policies, just like me, as, as resulted in my file eight oh two. Uh, so, as you may recall, it tells about eight oh two, puts some additional requirements on districts, uh. And this is basically some certifications or existing policy that came down from Iowa Association of School Boards. Uh, to keep us in compliance with state law. We like to follow the law.
Well, I'd say, when he's, when they pass a lot of, Cassie and I, you might have some points, I, I. Probably tell most of that was just pretty much verbatim coming from state, right, and some of the charts.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, any changes Chris put in red?
Yeah, I just.
If you want to.
Like a law, five, the laws are a lot of the, what they are.
Then a couple we just used all of their wording because it was more in depth.
Yeah, so six oh five point two looks like it's a complete replacement. Or is that a new policy?
Uh, six oh.
Five point two.
Complete. They, they were just, ours was very brief and short, and they went into much more detail.
No, no, school library, one, it's six oh five point five, no, I know we. It has to be open, we're okay with that.
Absolutely, we've got software that, that was in place for.
I just know we're limited on libraries.
On what?
Libraries, or the, you know, I mean, like people who can.
So, who are qualified to be one, yes, we're in a sharing agreement with Tifton.
Okay.
And we're using them, um.
That does affect this policy though.
Not at all, not at all, yeah.
I, I think you guys had already shared last print on, you know, making those things available online, and.
They were already, when the law came out, we were already in compliance with the law, so you can go to our website, get onto. Uh, the menu, scroll down to library services, and in there you can access each of the buildings. And we've got the software, all of our books are on software that you can just, does our library have this book? You can type in the title, and it'll tell you, it'll bring it up, or it won't bring it up, because we don't have it. So, you can check on, on, our library's completely open to the public.
The only one that I haven't really had a question was on eight oh two point four, maybe because I'm not sure exactly what it means.
I will get it.
Yeah. Really, I, I had some commentary, but. Davis, I mean, for. I didn't have any questions that the problem was, suggested or the language there. I just wanted to make sure.
I was, I was trying to figure out how we track, you know, when we start talking about these leases, leases of tangible assets, how that, what that means for tracking it, uh, on the district. Well, if we've got, if we're required to track these assets, you know, leases and asset, how is that reflected on our books that Pat keeps from a financial standpoint? So.
If you're pushing for what she goes about.
That's really, that's really, that's really Davis, that's a really Davis and Pat question to, to comply with the policy because it's, it's what state law requires. But I'm just trying to think about what that looks like when we, we start thinking about what our. What our books look like, you know, because we, we, we track all of our capital assets. I'm just trying to think, you know. What is, what is the least of the capital asset?
So then that's changing this result about though.
That's the portion of red. The district recognizes the important classmate leases of intangible asset. Intangible assets as assets or liabilities and financial statements.
That, that's not changed because of eight oh, the House file eight oh two. Or.
Well, it might have been because the House will, I think that was a broad education update though. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Portion that we're thinking about, but. We keep going down. Yes, that, yeah, I just for a second, yeah, for the, yeah, so I just like to better understand. We've got to comply, but I just, I'm more interested in, in, in what that's gonna look like and stuff that we see. Um, impacts of the end of the year stuff, what, what, what is that gonna look like? When we're tracking this stuff, so. But I'm not a financial guy, I think. So. With that, um. Is there a motion to approve the. Updated policies as presented. So motion by Coons. Also, I can, second by Alaska. Any further discussion? Any thoughts from our students? Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Ben's up on that.
Next up is the appointment of the student school board representative.
Did you prepare your speech?
You're, you're limited, you're limited to seven minutes, uh, and has to touch on all the topics. We're in that, we're in that memo you got. So, um, we're, we're, we're finishing up the first year of this, of this process. Uh, you know, we've had a good year. Hillary's done a great job. I represented by the fact she was in. For the record, the School Business Affairs Journal, uh, she was, she was highlighted in there as, as a student, uh. School board member and uh. And we started just to make sure we got a, a good perspective on. How, how, how we need to do, that affects students. Uh, Hillary's done a great job on making sure we, we keep things uh. Balance and, and don't get too far off the, off the reservation. So, um. Ben Cammon uh, has applied and has been recommended by the uh, board leadership team to fill the role for next year. Um. I don't know if there's questions from me. Uh, seems like most of you know him already and uh, have been treating him very well as a bar I can tonight.
But your pitch about why you applied and being most excited about.
Uh, I'm gonna be honest, I did not apply anywhere, but. I, I decided that this would be a good opportunity to be on here just because I thought it'd be pretty interesting. Would give me like good insight on. Like what goes on and I thought it'd be good for my project.
There's work, there's, there's work involved with it, but uh, we're happy you're willing to take it. Happy you're willing to take it on, so. Um, with that, I need a motion to approve the appointment that we.
I need a motion to approve Ben Cameron as a president. For new office, uh, students, school board representative.
Motion by Roll calls, second by Coons. Any discussion? Hillary's dead after this. Now, while they overlap in November. She'll, she'll go to I S B with us, uh, in November, um. It's a hard, hard term officially, I think, ended the end of November and. Is officially, so we got to be nice and we're happy to join us. He officially joins us, uh, for the I S B meeting, uh, and then.
Well, hopefully he's not there.
We've already talked, we've already talked about that. Um, we've already talked about that. But uh. And then with the, the board meeting, uh, the next one, you know, we hope that we'll be up. Officially at the board meeting, uh, on Tuesday. Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Uh, informational items, um. We all got some information from Pat, uh, you have, has laryngitis, uh, therefore cannot act, actually answer our questions. Um, and so we're deferring this to next month. I would maintain a motion to table the financial report to the November board meeting. So, motion by Coons. Second by Alaska. Discussion, hearing that all is favored, signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. I'm wishing Pat a speedy recovery, uh, she's been struggling with her voice since last week and. Uh, it is now officially all gone completely. Uh, so, uh, hopefully she is on the, the map here and gets it back uh. Soon. I S B annual convention details.
So just reminder to everybody, we're having our meeting on Tuesday, the fifteenth. And then just while you're all here, Jamie and Cassie, I have going down Tuesday, Wednesday. So either you won't be at the meeting or you'll leave from the meeting. We still have a meeting here. Uh, you, uh, because you.
Early morning Wednesday.
Wednesday morning. There's a Wednesday pre conference, what I guess was last year. And then, um. Everybody else except Tim is going Wednesday night. Tim's going Wednesday, Thursday night because he's got a Friday event that he signed up for. Um, yeah, you're coming back Thursday. So you'll see Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, so you've got your learning things on.
Wednesday.
On Thursday.
Yes, yeah. Okay, just wanted to make every, uh, make sure everybody was aware that we'll figure out driving and all that a little later for state. And Hillary, I will bring down Hillary Thursday and I will coordinate with Ben. If he can go, we'll sign him up when we get down there that day. I'm hoping he can't go, but we sent Hillary up that day. He get lots of free stuff. We'll grab some for you.
So there, and the most important thing is the chocolate cookies.
Yes.
Where they fresh make between every session. Uh, the reason most school board members go is to put the chocolate cookies.
But I do think on I S B website, they have what all is going on, but I can.
And there's an app that they sent out and I downloaded and I think I did it too quickly because when I tracked the login, it said that there are no sessions available yet. So.
Might not be.
So I, maybe it was too quick.
Yeah, I'll get all that information through that.
Yeah, including, I need more of the time to dress up on. Yeah, so.
Um, that's it.
Okay, um. That's what I'm saying. Rewards are right. There is no board learning tonight because we not putting it on there. We'll pick that up.
We, I had to turn everybody's board learning stuff in, so we'll start back up fresh.
In December.
In December.
We'll join up.
Yeah.
Uh, and you'll update the I S B site. Of, that, that in. So that'll give you access, that'll give you access to the I S B website, which has some more new stuff about what school boards do.
Yep.
Um, okay, uh, talking points. Cassie can go first, go ahead to Hillary and around and we won't torture Ben tonight because he's not here. Um, and uh. We know nobody's looking, he's, he's got to look for you next month.
Well, I'm super jazzed about this, uh, improvement that's going to make to the school and. Of course, both it's had to go, but if we get the ball rolling and starting to be a part of that process.
Um, I like the part about having the mental health to die. I think that'd be really good for sports, especially if I had a basketball meeting. And like how it's gonna benefit coaches, I have a bit too, and that's another like, our relationship with the coaches.
Uh, I think for me, if the mental health initially, you know, the work that's been going on and. Nutrition, basically, doing less, you know, it's even more than what I was about.
Hmm.
And we, we, we got this stuff more than you can. We helped, you know, we did, we just, uh, and uh, just appreciate the fact that he's always been. He's, uh, he was a backbone in that, uh, especially over the last.
I've got two things, uh. One, I S G, I think, you know, we talked about this summer kind of for that way together, how we're gonna do it. I think we're doing it right, right? The community involvement. Stakeholders, I think that's important. Tried to a couple other, uh. Just community leaders of different communities, and then board members, and they bailed on their last one. And I think part of it was just messaging. So I kind of gave them a little bit of a rundown on what we're doing. You know, they just said, hey, we failed, right? They're gonna have to wait a year, come back. But I think getting ahead of this and have a plan and a focus is gonna be good. Um. Just another thing, kind of, I wrote down some notes on what Josh had said. Momentum positive, you know, um. Seems like, you know, this whole year, like the instruction, you guys are way ahead of schedule. And maybe it's because we're not in a COVID type year where. Your time and Davis and everybody else and the administrators, it was just. It was on other things. So it's good to hear that. And again, I feel like the attitude and everything, you can kind of be in the buildings and stuff and uh. I'm excited for it. So it's been a great start.
I guess I'll touch on two things as well, um, that I've said it before. Thanks, Soli. It's been a great year. Uh, we're gonna miss you when you're gone. You know, he's got big shoes to fill, but we have confidence in him. Um, that's, I think that's a valuable role on our board, uh, and I think that, uh. You know, we, we, we gain a lot in having the student voice that I'm able to. Um, and so. And then I guess the other piece is just, um. You know, our professional development, um, you know. It's, it's been a long term priority in the district to invest in our staff. And I, I appreciate all the effort that goes into planning that out in a thoughtful way. Um, it's just, I can remember, uh, you know, way back when they just seemed that, seemed like it was less thoughtful. It was, it was very discreet, which is we're doing this. And then we're doing this and it seems like over, over time, it's, it's not been, it's not been an on off switch, but it seems like over time it's gradually become more integrated. And there's like a theme and everything seems to all fit together. And I think that, I think it's, I think it's helpful for, for the staff. I think it's helpful. It's a story for the community, but how this all ties together, uh, and it has potential for a lot greater uh, impact on our students. Um, with that. Our next regular board meeting is. November fifteenth, two thousand twenty two, here at five thirty P M. Please. Chris sends you the proposed calendar for next year. Look at it and look at it carefully so that when we set our plan agenda, we will not have two times that we have to move board meetings because we did not have. That we did not have, actually, I think it's probably three this time. One that we just had a, we were fairly two, let's try it out. Be a little more thoughtful as we look at it, uh, and make sure we catch the issues, uh, that might cause us to wanna have to move things. And I realized. This one time it just popped up, but the other times it's been like. Yeah, we knew in I S B is, we knew that we, we should have known that we scheduled it over right at the same time and we, we did it anyway. So let's uh, look at our calendars and if we know for sure now that. We've got a conflict, but we might have more than two people that know they're gonna be gone. They might wanna consider whether or not we want to do it on that night.
But just Thursday, still, are they still gonna work for everybody? At least we kind of know.
Yeah.
I know that pushes you, but.
Yeah, definitely, obviously. May not be late, let's also.
Yeah, okay.
With that, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. The rule, motion by Alaska. Second by Roll calls. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, and we stand adjourned at six fifty five.
You did it.